Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Rutland Select Board meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. We are here at Town Hall and via Zoom conferencing. We have three Select Board members tonight: Kurt Hathaway, Mary Ashcroft, and Matt Geddy. Sharon is ill, and Joey's birthday today, and we would sing to him, but he's not here.
I will be singing if he was here.
Probably for that reason.
Yeah, so please rise and try me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic.
To which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Select Board minutes for March 12th. They were in our packet.
To approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right, and I'll pass around this one. Okay.
Sure you don't want to come sit over here.
He's got to spread out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any board member announcements? Okay, chair announcements, just a couple. I have here a photocopy of a check received from ARD Realty, aka The Cortina Inn. It is for the month of April, and it includes the 5% increase that was in our contract. This is the increased month. Total amount $23,625. So they continue to house under at least one voucher program down there, and so we got a check for that. Thank you, Cortina, for your payment. And I've already announced that Joe's, it's Joe Donardo's birthday. Do we have any questions from the floor or public comments before we begin? How come I can't see anybody, Mike?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
There, I'll go blink.
Bill Sweet is on a fire call. For people on Zoom, and if we can't see you and you don't appear in a little box, so if you wish to say anything, you're just gonna have to unmute yourself and speak up.
It should be a...
Why don't you try one of them to make sure, see if Andres can hear.
Oh, there's Andres. Okay, good.
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Andres.
Hi.
Okay, well, actually, with the board's permission, we're gonna go right to Andres, and you are scheduled to be at 6:00 PM, and it's to discuss our stormwater permit updates. And we have all received as part of your packet the stormwater management plan, but you, I'm assuming you drafted it for us.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
So, tell us what we need to know, and then we'll have some questions, probably.
Yeah, definitely. So, there are a couple things, just to kind of run down the list. We'll start with the stormwater management plan. So this was due because, basically, the general permit, the MS4 general permit, is being renewed by the state. And so the state has some new requirements based on what's in that general permit. So therefore, all of the MS4s needed to update their stormwater management plan. And so when you look through the stormwater management plan, the highlight, highlighted areas were really what needed to be changed. And a lot of it, I think, was, you know, just really making sure that we were just in compliance with kind of the new state language on that. I don't think it was anything really too critical. There were a couple things, you know, we changed, there was a link to the EPA website, which was broken, you know, we changed that. We just updated, basically, some of the language for the illicit discharge detection work, which is one of the requirements of the MS4. You know, we had been doing that work, so we kind of updated with some language related to kind of some recent work that we did within the town, kind of so that we got that current. And so, yeah, that actually, so this document went into the state today for review. I'm expecting we might, you know, get some comments back, we might not. But it went in, today was the deadline. So the changes went in, and then by the first of April, we have to submit the MS4 annual report, and that's just gonna be a summary of all the activities from the past year since April 2023. So we're working on that now. We're gonna be submitting that, you know, before the first. And so, yeah, I think, you know, there's, there's a couple of key things that I just wanted to bring to the board's attention. I think one of the things related to the stormwater management plan is, the stormwater management plan describes minimum measures one and two. And minimum measures one and two are the, kind of the outreach and education pieces of the MS4 permit. Minimum measure one is public education and outreach on stormwater impacts, and minimum measure two is public involvement and participation. And several years ago, the town had a MOU with the Planning Commission to basically take the requirements, take those two requirements and, and do, you know, complete those requirements on behalf of the town. And so, that really, I think, needs to be a priority moving forward, because I don't believe that that MOU is valid anymore. I think it needs to be renewed. So my recommendation would be that the town prioritize kind of just getting into a discussion with the Regional Planning Commission about a, an agreement, you know, moving forward for this year to complete, you know, public education and outreach, public involvement type items to, to, you know, at, at least a minimum to, to meet this minimum measure one and two.
Well, that answers part of the question that I had, which is, who's responsible for all of this? But it, it sounds like an MOU with the Regional Planning Commission is in order.
Yep.
And, because I was thinking, we've got our townwide celebration coming up, and we could always do a public education table there with, you know, rain barrels and rain gardens and stuff like that, and stencils for marking sewers and handouts, and, okay. This is a lot, and there's a lot of responsibility on the town to do all of this monitoring. How much, who's, who's doing it here for us, or is that something you're doing for us?
So when you say the monitoring now, are we speaking about other, other components of the plan, other than the minimum measure one and two, like the actual water part of the plan?
Well, that would presume that I knew what I was talking about, but I meant general monitoring for compliance with all of the components in here.
Right. So I have been, you know, basically overseeing, you know, tracking, you know, all the different requirements in the plan on, on behalf of the town, for, you know, as part of our work in the town. So I'm kind of keeping, you know, keeping things going. And, you know, one, so I wanted to mention the minimum measure one and two, so that would be starting a dialogue with the Planning Commission. I think that's the easiest way, the cheapest way to kind of meet this requirement. So I think that that would be a good thing to do. And then, moving to more of the technical elements of the plan, there are, it's actually the flow restoration plan and the phosphorus control plan, which are really attachments to this plan, but those are really where kind of the heavy lifting comes into place related to engineering, design, and implementation of new projects. And so there's a memo, which I prepared and drafted, that I was gonna send to Bill, related to kind of adjusting the schedule for implementing those projects. And some of the projects are probably familiar. We've talked about them before. There's the, one of the ones that's right up, you know, kind of should be right up on the top of the priority list is the Windmere Pond, right? So Windmere is, Windmere is, currently, there is a, a partial design for expanding the pond at Windmere. And that is a project that is in the flow restoration plan, and it's right up kind of next in line for compliance. And I think it really needs to be a high priority for the town to basically take it to final engineering, and then actually figure out how to actually get it constructed. And right now, the estimate that we have for construction is like $230,000. And so, there's no money other than what the town has currently with the state. The town has this, this, this block grant through the state, may be able to afford, you know, some, some of the money. But I think that there's probably gonna have to be some other grant funds, you know, sussed out to, to fund that project. And that is something that I think, you know, should be kind of at the forefront this year to try to get that done. Because since it's partially designed, should be kind of, the design should be finished, and then we should start looking for implementation funding. And, and there's a couple other projects which are really high up on the list. There's the Nancy Lane Swale, which is, you know, another project that we've discussed before, but that one really hasn't started the design process yet. So I think that that really needs to get going. So there, there really are, you know, the state is kind of, they're, they're flexible with these, with these timelines, but those are projects that are kind of written into these approved phosphorus control plans and flow restoration plans, which really do need to continue to kind of be ticked off the list. And so we're, I, I would say for the next year, you know, two years, those are ones that really need to be prioritized. And I can kind of, kind of help, you know, push that ball and kind of look for the grant funding and work with, you know, the town to kind of get those, get those back on track. But that's, that, that's, I think, the other big priority, other than the minimum measure one and two.
Okay, good. Thank you. And yes, please, as far as I'm concerned, continue to help us with that. I know that Windmere especially has been kind of holding out there for quite a while. And it was a big piece of what we needed to do to meet whatever, we had a percentage goal that we were supposed to be hitting. So I know that's... Questions from other Select Board members? Okay. Yes, our Road Commissioner, Dave Sears.
Hey, Andres, this is Dave.
Hey, Dave.
When we talked last year, you said that Nancy and David and that whole
Yep.
...infrastructure, you guys were working on some kind of a plan. I've been asked to pave some streets up there, because they're getting kind of bad. And I'm kind of pushing them off, because I don't really want to pave and then tear them up to put in storm infrastructure. And so you just said that you guys haven't even started working on Nancy yet? Is that...
Right.
I gotta get back, I gotta, I gotta get back to this guy soon. So I, I just need like a timeline on what you're looking at for.
Right. So the revised, so what we suggested as the revised implementation schedule for Nancy Lane is implementation in 2025 to 2027. So just left it, you know, a little bit of a range there. So definitely not this year, obviously, but at the soonest, I think it would be 2025.
Okay, so that...
We should get the ball rolling on that, then, because that neighborhood is
Yes.
junk. The asphalt needs it bad.
Is that, that was up in the area we just got the petition from?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's around the corner.
Okay.
Presumably, you'd do the whole
Yeah, that
A lot of loops there, so
That whole neighborhood's junk.
Once you start.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Get that ball rolling sooner and later, and probably be better.
Any other questions, Dave, for Andres? Andres, do we need any action tonight?
Well, I, I think one, let me, let me touch on one other, well, actually, two other things that may require some action. I'm not sure. But one of the things is, you know, the, the town has the stormwater ordinance, right? And the stormwater ordinance references the stormwater management plan, and it also references the state stormwater standards. The state stormwater standards have now changed with respect to, you know, post-construction stormwater. The requirement, when we first did the ordinance, was one acre of impervious surface, you'd require a state stormwater permit. That's, that's currently gone down to a half an acre. And so there's some things in the ordinance that need to be updated just for consistency with the language, you know, reflecting the state requirements. And, and the other thing that's there, the state has gotten a little more flexible in terms of the requirements for the town to regulate erosion and sediment control. It used to be that the, the state was looking for something more aggressive than the state standards, when you're close up to the, to the stream, to Moonbrook. But they've since kind of relaxed that, and they've basically said, if you're meeting the state standards, you're good, with respect to the erosion control. And the way that it's written now in the ordinance is, you basically are regulating to the state standard unless you're within the buffer of Moonbrook, and then the regulation gets a little more stringent than the state rules if you're within the buffer. My recommendation, I think, would be to keep that as is, because I think it's a pretty infrequent, you know, occurrence that somebody's trying to develop within the buffer of Moonbrook. And it is really important to kind of protect Moonbrook. It's only gonna be in the town's best investment so that it doesn't get, get worse water quality-wise, which is ultimately gonna cost the town more money. So I think in that sense, I would suggest just keeping the ordinance as it is, but I just wanted to make the board aware of that. But I, but I also do think that, at a minimum, the ordinance should be updated just, just for that consistency with, with the state, state regs. So that's just something that, you know, should be considered there.
So is that something you prepare, revisions to the ordinance?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Happy to do that.
I, thank you. I do see that we have budgeted, actually, a fairly substantial amount, and the budget passed. So there's $105,000 in our budget beginning fiscal year, well, July 1st. And I was flipping through to see if we had a corresponding grant from the state. I think we usually get some pretty hefty grant money for that.
You do.
Okay.
You do have a grant. You do have a grant from the state, too. And I, I'm not, I can't, I don't know the, the total offhand, but it's also a pretty significant amount. There's this new grant program.
I think it's 80, I think it's $84,000.
Yep. That sounds right.
Yeah. Okay. So, we, we've got work to do, but we, looks like we do have a grant and some funds to do it.
So, let me just, and I think the last thing I'll mention, this has been on my to-do list to, to ask the board this for a while, but the, you know, the MS4 has, we've absorbed some of the permits into the MS4. So the Carmel Place and some of the other development sites that have individual permits have now been kind of rolled into the MS4. I know that the school, the Rutland School, Town School, does have a permit, and I think it was always a question whether the town was interested in absorbing that into the MS4. I mean, that would require that the town pick up the maintenance of what's at the school, but, you know, that's an option, I guess.
Well, given the, the state of the school's finances, I'm surprised they haven't raised it with us.
I'm pretty sure the town maintained it the last time it needed some work, if I remember right.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe we should have that conversation. Maybe we should task our school board liaison with raising that, because he doesn't have enough to do. Okay.
Maintaining it anyway, you know, maybe, maybe you want to, just because then it, it kind of gets rid of one of the permits and, you know, the, the fees and stuff associated with it. So simplifies.
Well, I just, I did notice that an Act 250 permit amendment came through for the school for culverts and drainage.
Okay.
So they're doing something there, and I'm assuming this is it. And I was kind of wondering if Highway Department was involved at all.
I don't know.
All right. So something's going on with the school.
They got a grant or something. They're taking care of that.
Okay.
From what you bought the drainage.
Yeah.
Something go back.
Yeah.
I just know that they got a grant.
Okay.
They have money to, to do some of that work.
Okay. So, but ongoing, do we take over their MS4 permit is a question? All right. When are you gonna come visit with us the next time? And what's, what's on our plate that we need to decide?
You know, I think just confirmation that, you know, I should go ahead and, and kind of redline the ordinance with some changes and work with Bill to, to update that. And then, kind of keep pursuing these projects, you know, the ones that I'd been describing, the, the Windmere project. And then, I think with the, I'd probably come visit you next if we did wanna try to get in, get the Planning Commission engaged for the minimum measure one and two. I could help facilitate that and do a meeting and, and then come up with some ideas and then, you know, brief the board if you'd like after that.
Yes. I think Kurt's yes, I'm yes, Matt's yes. So please do go ahead and work on the one and two, the ordinance revisions, and moving Windmere along a bit more.
Mm-hmm.
And so we can make an informed decision. If you could check and see what it would cost the town to take over the school
Yep.
MS4 permit. I don't even know if they want us to, but that'd be good to know.
Sure. I can, I can look into that and send Bill. I could work something up for Bill. Yep.
Yeah. I'm sure they'd hop on that.
All right. Good. All right. Other questions from Select Board for, for Andres? All right. Thank you very much for keeping on top of this. And we've budgeted money, so we, we value your work, and we want you to keep coming back and helping us out.
Great. And just for Dave, too, just to mention before I go, I'll be inspecting all of the, all these, all these sites that have kind of been rolled into the town's MS4, you know, needs to be inspected every year. So those are on the list. So I'll be doing those, you know, soon with the, I would think in April, we'll come down and get those all done. And those inspections will be submitted to the state, and then I'll come up with a list of internal to-do items, and I'll, I'll go over that with, with Dave. So he's aware of it first.
So didn't the Highway Department just get a nifty, handy-dandy sewer inspection camera? Okay. So we have a camera you can use.
That's great. Perfect.
Don't break it.
All right. Yeah.
All right. Thanks very much, Andres. Have a good evening.
Take care.
All right. Is, let me just take, is JP on?
He was. He's not on now.
Yes, I am.
Can you, so I think, I think you have that on speaker view. If you can turn it to gallery view, it would show.
I know, but that's the key you wanna look for.
Mike is in charge of the video this evening. So
He's the tech guy.
Not real well, but
Is that JP over?
Yes.
He's on, Mr. Technology, either.
JP, I had a couple of questions on, and need your expertise and advice on a couple of the things that we have presented for payment.
Okay.
First question is, VMS is put in for a payment, and this will come from the ARPA or the Capital Improvements Fund in, in the amount of $133,260. Have you had a chance to review that? And is that appropriate? Are they on track? And do we go ahead and sign to authorize payment?
Yes. Typically, Mary, I won't forward it to the, to the board until the architects have signed off verifying it. So that, those steps have been taken.
Okay. That reminds me to look for the architect's signature. So... All right. Well, it's not, I can't see that the architect has physically signed this particular document, but if you forwarded it, then the architect has seen it and okayed it.
Yeah.
So, any questions about this, or shall we go ahead and sign it?
I didn't have any questions. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking to me.
Nope. And you didn't have any questions, and that was the only one I had. So I'm gonna go ahead and sign that. Okay. And I think Kurt has answered mostly my next question, but let me pose it anyway. We have a, which you, an invoice from Green Mountain Power, an estimate of about $29,000, the estimated GMP cost for running three-phase power up there. First question is, given the, given the size of that bill, do we need three-phase power, and if so, for what?
So my understanding is, we need three-phase power for two reasons. Some of the equipment will require it, and I understand that three-phase power is cheaper than two-phase power. So there is a chance, over the long run, of recouping this expense. But the other, the reason why we're doing that, we're gonna be moving the service pole from its current location, and we have to do that to accommodate the building, and also to accommodate the three-phase construction. But you'll recall, Joey came up with the idea of including conduit to daylight where the new pole is going to be, and that will allow, if we have a high-water event that took out the pumping station over on State Place last time, we would be able to run that pumping station from the fire station generator. And it was my understanding that three-phase would make that a much more efficient operation.
And that's got a question.
So that last piece, I guess, is what I remembered Joe bringing up as a optional thing that we could, we could do and take advantage of. But was the rest of this already a cost that we anticipated in, as part of the budget?
We did anticipate that there would be costs from Green Mountain for relocating the pole and going to three-phase. Yes, that was discussed.
Okay. And I noticed that there's, in the GMP contract, reference to things that we or our contractor have to provide, and that includes the conduit. Do you have any sense of how much that cost might be? And is it already included in the cost of the public safety building, or can we expect to change order and increase on that?
That should all be, should be included. If there's a change order on that.
I think Kurt's right about that. I thought
It, it should be in there. It's, it's power service to the building. If they didn't figure conduit to pull power to the building, then they can eat it. It's kind of where I stand on that. So we shouldn't have a change order for that.
Okay. All right. So a couple of things to watch. All right. So we have, we have signed, then, the orders. And thank you for keeping us up to date and weighing in on that. Appreciate it.
Oh, sure. We had a meeting today with Patrick, the site engineer, and we're looking at trying to develop a couple more parking spaces. We have some, as you know, there's a, still a, a pretty large void on the north end of the property, which would be behind the station. And Patrick is gonna be looking at perhaps moving the impound lot from its current location, which would allow access to up to four or five additional parking spaces back there. So that would, and we have material that's been excavated on-site that may be appropriate. They're debating whether it's appropriate fill for a parking lot. And the Um, and the suggestion was made that we would go with a gravel parking lot for a couple of years to see how it all settles out before even considered paving it. But, uh, we'll have more information for you on that at, uh, your next meeting. And I know Joey plans on attending the next meeting, so we can, uh, explain all of that to you.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I know that we were looking at increasing the number of parking spaces. So that's all in line with what I remember here.
And the building is watertight. The building is watertight, which is great news. Um, and they're going, yeah.
Um, okay. And are they, as far as you can see on, did they pour the the flooring? That was Kurt's question.
No, I don't think they poured the floor.
Oh, it was Mike Rowe's question, sorry.
Oh, Mike. I'm Mike. Just curious, he had a block, didn't he? If they poured the floor yet, that was all just a question.
So like, we ran in a couple of more fingers of ledge that we're dealing with. Um, and we're probably over the thirty-two cubic yards we estimated, but I don't know by how much at this point. We also have a feeling there's a finger of ledge under the current construction trailer, which will have to be removed for the parking lot. So we'll just have to wait to to see on that. But to your question, though, I don't believe the floor has been poured yet.
Okay, thanks JP. Um, on either of your other hats, do you have any town health officer or second constable report?
Uh, no, just that the state has officially taken over the landlord tenant responsibilities of the health officer. Um, I did have a couple of health officer complaints and I referred them to the new, uh, TJ Garo is the fellow in our area that's gonna be, uh, wearing that hat from here on.
Oh, my God. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else for John Paul? Okay, thanks JP.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
Right.
Bye.
You too. Now, I think the three of us have signed the docs that we have to approve payments.
Yeah, that's all signed. Yeah.
Did you get the last?
Yeah, I got those too.
All right, Ed Dumas, town police chief.
If not, we'll hear about it.
Good evening, Ed.
Good evening. The last two weeks, we had, uh, that's wrong quite a bit. We had fifty-three complaint or call for service. We had six traffic stops. We're very busy with thefts in the south end. And newest thing is we had a, a couple burglaries that were concerning. But we're still investigating them.
Okay.
Without giving.
Residential?
Residential in Town Rowland. That's all I have for. Also have a concern with, uh, one of the storage, uh, facilities in the area. We're having a hard time getting information from them, access to their cameras when people are making complaints that they're, uh, their, uh, storage units have been broken into. They have a process set up that's very, uh, cumbersome to try to get a hold of somebody in charge to get the, you have to talk to a company who talks to some, eventually they may get back to us. So we're, I told them, I had a conversation, I said, I'm not happy and, if maybe I'll talk to the board and maybe we'll have to do something different if they don't start. They wanna do business here, they should at least help us, help people who store their stuff here.
Yeah, or we're just gonna have to let people know it's not a good place to store their stuff. Yeah.
So that on the north side? Yes.
Okay.
I might have a, I'll see if I can pull contact. Please do, let me know.
Yeah, good, thanks.
Don't, I'm met some of those people before. Not real happy with them at this point in time. We have a few things. Yeah. Uh, that's all I have. Um, any questions on the last two weeks?
Matt and I know we have to do a police committee meeting pretty soon.
Yeah, some things we kinda added on.
Yeah. Yeah, um, on CFAC and on the new officer positions.
And the other thing I had was I put these on your desk because I got a call from WCX who wanted us, wanted to know what we were gonna do about it. I said, well, we've been kind of busy and haven't had a whole lot of time to think about it. I reached out to Hannafords. I spoke to them. They still give a, I don't know how we wanna proceed with it or if we can. I've had a few ideas that if we did set something up that it would stay in that. I mean, there's places to buy food, clothing. They seem to be stealing mostly food at this point in time, so.
Um, and I had, uh, a friend who suggested there, you know, a, a local charity that, you know, doesn't have a, I don't think they have a five oh one C three or anything set up, but they serve about a hundred and fifty meals a day. And they're saying, hey, we could use some of that money to further what we do.
Okay.
So.
I don't really think we should be trying to name organizations on the sign. I mean, I think if it says, I mean, because there's so many options for different things.
We were trying to come up with one place where people could.
Yeah, but why?
It's local.
Why try to pick one? I mean, there's so many. Then everyone else is gonna say, well, why wasn't it us? You know, why isn't that a whole list? Or, I mean, the, the notion is just to tell people there's other ways to help by actually giving to a nonprofit that's already doing these, doing the work. And, you know, and if you put on a two, call two-one-one for people that are looking for work, then they, or for help, then they can get, you know, connected with all sorts of different organizations that way, depending on what their needs are. On that, it's, it's a state-funded type thing and therefore it doesn't stay local. This is, the two-on-one is just for calling, if you're looking to get connected with organizations for help. That wouldn't be for people that donate. That's, it's two, two different issues that they're trying to address on this sample sign here. Um, but I don't know, I just think it's kind of difficult for us to be trying to choose who we're gonna favor and put on the sign. And then if you do that, and then what if circumstances change? But if that organization goes away or no longer becomes the, the appropriate one for that need.
Let's do this. Um, to give us a little time to look into it a little more, um, let's put it on our police committee agenda. We can figure out what we wanna say on the sign.
Ended at Highway Committee yesterday. Signs are ordered.
Okay, what does?
I can unorder them.
What's the sign say?
That.
Give instead to agencies that help those in need, need help, call two-one-one?
Yes.
Okay.
Said decision was made for us.
You know, in the morning, stop it, that's fine.
I think that's fine. It's just a general.
Okay.
Thing, it's the whole point of it is just to say, hey, you know, there are other ways to help these folks rather than handing them cash here.
We could reach out to two-one-one ourselves and proactively say, hey, this, you may get an increase in calls and come up with a list of places that are local that we could provide to them.
Yeah.
They could provide out.
And if Hannafords comes through, we can add that to the two-one-one information center.
We can put a spot on the website, like we can create a spot on the website for resources.
Okay.
Point people to that as the spot to go to. But we, but if, if you wanna keep it, we keep it as two-one-one, I mean, we can set, set a different phone number. But we can reach out to two-one-one and say, hey, we're, we're gonna start doing this and here's some resources and here's a place to go to find them in town.
Okay.
For the people.
All right, so.
We wanted to do this to stop the, uh, the turf wars down there.
Yes.
People getting, uh, money every day.
And these will be up high enough that they can't hang anything over it to, sort of, kind of.
Yeah.
All right.
M U T C D says minimum, uh, bottom of the sign is seven feet.
Okay.
But that's not really.
It'll probably be soon decorated with some additional vergeage that we did not.
Perhaps, yeah. Okay, good. So any questions for Chief of Police? All right, thanks, Ed.
I just wish people were getting in turf wars at, you know, job fairs. Something a little bit more productive.
I've had a similar conversation with friends. All right, um, is Barbara on?
She had a illness and she's not drained today.
Okay, um, so you will hear as you go through Andres's remarks that he will be in touch with Barbara and the Planning Commission locally to update our stormwater ordinance. And we need to revise an MOU with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, so.
There's a bunch of work there for you. You'll have to listen to it.
Yeah, okay.
Commission and our, us are, we're, we're, we're close.
Yeah. Um, which could bring, um, so David, um, this is good timing, I think. David is our alternate representative, David Rosenblum, our alternate representative to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, although it's not called that quite anymore. Um, and we are, of course Fred Nicholson was our, our primary. And, um, do you have a report? Have you gone to a meeting lately?
I went to a meeting, um, nothing substantial. It's, uh, no.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I've been in touch with, with the chairman. So she's, she'll keep me informed.
Okay.
What's going on.
Okay.
But there was, uh, my gather, there was nothing substantial from the last meeting.
Okay. Yeah, so question, you've been the alternate to the regional commission. Do you wanna be the, the delegate?
If I'm not mistaken, I got appointed as alternate when I fell asleep at one of these meetings.
Yeah, you gotta be careful about that, but.
If no one else wants it, I'll, I'll pick it up. I've been there.
Okay.
I served on the regional planning commission for years for Killington.
Yep.
So that's how I knew Fred.
Yep. Okay.
Continue to go to meetings.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
There's another issue there, which the regional planning commission, it's their issue. Fred was chairman of certain, a certain committee or so. So that, that is not your jurisdiction, that's your jurisdiction. If they wanna stick me with it. I think they'll probably pick somebody that's to be chairman that's been on the committee, that committee in the interim.
Okay.
And end up being the alternate there.
Okay. All right.
Fred filled more shoes than just one.
Um, he, he did in many ways, yes, indeed. Yeah. Okay, so thank you for that. Appreciate it. Um, Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Technology wizard.
Thank you, Mike, for helping us out with.
I think I did more damage than good, that's.
Zoom call.
Those of you that couldn't get on and make it look like that. There we go.
Yeah.
Um, I only have a couple of things. Hopefully the snow goes away real soon. We're scheduled to, uh, start baseball next week. Um, and we still might, don't, I'm looking at grass on the hillside over there. We're all good. Yeah, we have a clinic on Saturday, um, for our, uh, five, six team at school. And then as soon as the weather changes, which is, looks like it will be, um, we'll be out. And that means everything starts moving quickly, um, with the spring. Uh, other than that, I just kind of sent out the, um, my lifeguards to see who's coming back. And so far, out of the thirteen, there are eleven definite, so that's a good thing. So I'll probably look to hire two, maybe three.
Okay.
Because I'll have a higher turnover next year, uh, just with the anticipation of how it looks like. So we're in really good shape for lifeguards for the summer.
Good.
Our groups are all scheduled and set for the summer, which is great. We'll pull the cover off in a couple of weeks. Um, I know it's the favorite part of the year, pulling the cover off, rolling it up.
So sad when it goes on in.
It is the worst day of the year. It is absolutely the worst day of the year. Um, other than that, I had, um, thought afterwards and talked with Sharon and a little bit with Matt and then with Bill about, um, purchasing a sprayer for the back of our, uh, little tractor that we have so that we can start to do in-house, um, spraying through the town. Um, so I don't want any action this evening, but I would like to have a discussion next time about purchasing one using the capital improvement fund. That way we have the availability to do the spraying, um, throughout the town. The cemetery next door could use it. Uh, I could spray way more in the park with the ability on the back of the trailer. So between Bill and I and Dave, we have working on one that will attach to the back. We do have a licensed person on staff with Highway, that's Chris. Um, so it'd just be more cost-effective in the future and actually more beneficial to keeping the grounds looking better.
Um, just a reminder, purchasing policy requires, unless it's a preferred vendor that you're purchasing from, um, three, that you have to go out to bid if the cost is over five thousand dollars.
And we're looking at we can stay under that. That's kind of our goal.
Which case, you know, get, get a couple of estimates.
Of course, of course. Um, but that would hopefully set us up moving forward, being able to do a little bit more fertilizing and just more liquid application rather than dry. So that, I'll bring it back up next meeting when we have more information for you.
I gotta say, as farmer's wife here, we were always very leery of applications and, um, just staying away from it as much as we could, but that's just my own personal background. And we, we were careful not to have, um, we prefer to have it applied rather than hire, having somebody on the farm, an employee of the farm do it. So, you know, I, I don't consider those things safe to handle. Um, and that's my bias toward the thing, so.
That's okay. We do have, Chris is a certified.
Yeah, go ahead.
We, we just don't have the equipment to do that. Um, so that would put us in the next step to be able to do that. Just a more cost-effective to keep it from dying and just turning into a sandpit, which it actually is. It's a sandpit and we try to keep it green. Um, and that's kind of where we're going. Other than that, I don't, um, have too much just to remember to residents that the snow is melting, so all of your winter, uh, dog trappings are starting to appear. So please be diligent and remember to keep your dog on a leash at all times within the park and to please use our two dog receptacles that we have for waste, not dog receptacles, waste receptacles. Sorry, that sounded a little weird. You know, you're gonna get a whole bunch of dogs there tomorrow waiting to be taken away. Um, and please use those and, uh, my number's plastered out all over the place, so please give me a call if we run out of bags or, or something. Um, let's just try to get back into being good neighbors and playing nice in the sandbox when it comes to dogs in the park.
And it doesn't count if you put the waste in a bag and then just leave it.
No, that's, that's the lazy, just carry it. There's two receptacles or take it home.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's annoying. That's even worse, because then they're everywhere. So, you know, we put them where you park, so. Deposit them when you go back to your car, please, and thank you. We greatly appreciate it. Unless you guys have anything for me, that's really all I have tonight.
Kurt, anything? Uh, anything?
A little off topic, but will your, um, tech ed, uh, bridge building exercises now involve a container ship simulation?
Maybe next year. I'm building towers. Your daughter is doing very well. Side piece. I'm building towers, not bridges now. Yeah, we, we could add a container ship. Process. I have to walk across them, so that's kind of a container ship in itself right there. But yes.
More engineering needs to be done.
Yeah, clearly, that, that went down pretty quick, no.
I know someone that drove across it an hour before it happened.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh, I thought they would have had a barrier around it or something, but.
It's gotta be a pretty big barrier for that.
Yeah, really.
I think there'll be a lot of bridges getting re-inspected now.
Yep.
Anyways.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner. Did you catch up on your sleep?
When you sleep, when you die.
Hey, what's going on your tombstone?
Okay, so we started, uh, the last couple of weeks, uh, we took care of some widow makers. We had that one on Quarterline.
Thank you.
We managed to get that one down. We had another one on, uh, Curtis Brook and one on Boardman Hills. Went out and played with those for a day. Uh, we spent a couple of days working in the salt shed. We had an empty tank. It's like six thousand gallons worth of tanks in there and we emptied one of them out and we don't really need that much material. So we had to kind of replumb. So we had to kind of replumb everything and we moved one of the tanks out.
Tank?
The, the liquid, the mag chloride.
Oh, okay, right.
So we've got two full tanks now, which is, uh, well, they're 2,500 gallons. So five, we got 5,000 gallons, uh, which is more than what we need for what we're doing.
Okay.
So we spent a couple of days kind of reworking that whole thing. Um, we had three storm responses since the last meeting, um, with the granddaddy of all of them on Saturday. I gotta give the guys credit. They've 20 hours in a plow truck. We got out of those trucks for literally a half an hour at one o'clock and never got out of them again until we went home at midnight.
Okay.
So they did a really good job.
So all, all of the, all three of the highway crew, including you, were out plowing?
All four of us. Yep. And then the, the contractors.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody was out. It was a marathon.
Please thank the crew for us.
I will. Thank you. Um, yesterday and today, we basically just played cleanup, running around knocking down piles that people couldn't see around and it's numerous mailboxes.
You're not supposed to knock those down, just.
Well, yeah, you grab them. When you plow for 20 hours, at some point you lose track of where the edge of the road is and some things just, that just happens.
I understand.
Uh, so with that being said, the contractors are at 37 callouts right now.
Okay, what's this number, 42?
Forty.
Forty?
We lowered it to forty this year.
Okay.
Rather than give them a, a, last year we gave them the diesel stipend and.
Yeah.
And a little bit of a pay raise. This year they, they actually asked for forty.
Okay.
So we lowered it just to forty and didn't give them any extra money.
So how many callouts do you count for the storm?
Every four hours is a callout.
Okay.
So we got five out of that because they came, there was, or six out of that because they're, they're for, they're in for 20 hours on Saturday and then they came in again on Sunday to clean up.
Okay.
Um, in, I'm not sure if it's in the packet. I hope it is. The mileage thing from the state for.
In the green folder?
Yep. It was the one that we discussed and just, it just didn't get signed.
Ah, the annual financial plan, town highways. We, the legislative body of the municipality of Rutland Town, certify the funds raised by municipal taxes are equivalent to or greater than the sum of at least $300 per mile for each mile of class one, two, and three highway in the municipality. Is there a motion?
I rarely approve this.
I thought we did too.
I thought we did too. It just never got signed.
Forms.
You approved it. This one never got signed. So it's back to be signed. It was signed the other one.
And so what was the date at which we approved it?
It was last meeting. So it would've been, uh, March 12.
Three, 12, 24. All right. So circulate this for signature again. Yeah, thank you. I didn't miss that.
I don't know, cause you, you talked about it and then I, I got it, I got it the next day. I'm like, oh.
Thought we signed one of them.
You did sign one.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, it's taken care of now.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's in the folder. Bill has it. Okay, any questions for our road commissioner?
There's some topics from the highway committee yesterday.
I did, did not make that one.
Okay.
Half the committee skipped it.
Oh, paving bids, paving bids. Okay.
Because of, because of chasing ourselves around the last couple of days, I haven't really had time to sit down and go through them. So I'll have that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, uh, the culvert cleaning bid number two, um, I sent that out to three companies and I got a phone call from a fourth from Burlington. Um, the one from Burlington, we took, we received it yesterday. It was supposed to be in by last Thursday, so they didn't really make it. They didn't qualify or they, they weren't low anyway. Um, so A1 sewer and drain was the, the big winner there.
Okay. Um, do we need to approve anything or, yeah?
Uh, yeah, I guess you would like to recommend.
Entertain a motion to, um, hire A1 sewer and drain to accept their bid for $3,000 per day for cleaning and 1,800 for camera work. Is that 1,800 per day or just 1,800?
Per day.
Okay. Is there a motion?
A move. Second.
Motion is made in second and discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you. Um, Stephanie Burke, um, from the Planning Commission.
Oh, good.
Threw her hat in the ring for the municipal project manager for the Route Seven Sidewalk. Uh, we discussed that. Um, her price was $38,844.61 to, uh, take on that project. Um, it was a recommendation of the Committee of One to move forward with that.
Do we have costs from anybody else? I think we did at one point.
That, that was, yeah.
Right, that's it. Okay.
That's the big head.
Oh, right. Okay.
So let's just go with that.
Okay, yes, that's what we were, okay. So is there a motion?
Some of them.
Motion's been made to use Stephanie Burke of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission for municipal project manage, manager for Route Seven North Sidewalk project. Is there a second?
Maybe, maybe reword it slightly just for accuracy. We can, we are, we are going to submit her as our pick to the state for approval.
That's what I said.
That's, that's what I heard. That's what I made.
Okay. Okay.
You can't actually say we, this.
Fine. Okay. And Kurt seconded that motion too with all of those.
That is seconded.
Careful wording. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to, um, send Stephanie Burke's name to the state for approval. This is JP's sidewalk. Um, discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Okay, uh, next, uh, we discussed the VLCT grant for the vehicle monitoring and dash cameras for the highway department. Um, they agreed to give us a grant to which they've never done before because this is kind of an odd thing. And they were kind of, they were all about it. So, um, the, the cost for the equipment and the monitoring is, uh, $6,090 over the course of two years. And VLCT is giving us, uh, $1,402.50 toward that expense.
Not quite, not really half.
Not quite half.
Yeah. And there were some conditions that they put on it.
Right.
Um, we have to keep track.
They are going to develop a list of questions to, that we will need to answer. Uh, so this is essentially half of one year.
Okay.
So that's what the $1,400, essentially half of one year. Uh, but we are, we are the first town to ever ask for this type of service before. So, and so they're, they're interested, they're interested. Uh, but we're going to be a test subject for that.
So, well, two questions. One, um, do we get another year's worth maybe if we answer the question satisfactorily?
If we answer satisfactorily, then I will add, include this in the grant application for next year.
Okay.
So we, we, that, that is part of my plan to ask for, if it's successful for, for the next year too, yes.
Okay.
That will be committed at that point to two years.
Right, we will. Yeah.
So we are going to get, normally what happens is you have to submit to them the invoices and approve a payment to get reimbursed. But we can't really do that with a monthly service. So they have agreed that if we send them the assigned contract, that will count. And they will give us the $1,400.
Okay.
So we will have that upfront. So we'll pay, we'll pay like 1,600 dollars the first year and 3,000 next year, and 3,000 next year. So.
So where would the, where would our portion of this be coming from?
Out of highway department. I'll make it work.
Like, this was something that we, we, we didn't anticipate this when we, we started. So this is, so we're, we are, we are going to be able to offset most of it in the first year. So, and if we are go through, we can plan for it for next year's budget. So we can include the total cost in there.
Okay. Is there a motion? It's there.
Well, so what exactly do we need at this point? We need to accept their.
If we're okay with accepting their proposal, VLCT proposal, there is an agreement for the services in the green folder to sign.
Why don't I open the green folder?
Make a motion that, uh, we approve it and Mary sign it. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
That's the detail.
Is this the, um, T-Mobile?
Yes.
Okay, all right. This is, I mean, I kind of view this as a safety thing, right? This is why, that's, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so motion's been.
Well, we're not going to get the phones. We're just going to do the, the monitoring. But they did give us a phone to use and it did work pretty well. I mean, I use it in my house over in Arlo. Now that's spotty over there, so.
All right. Motion's been made in the second and any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. I'm signing.
A bullet point number five was the, uh, wording on the signs for Ed, which I'm pretty sure we've crossed that bridge already.
I think we have.
Uh, Vtrans has been contact, had, has contacted us on a follow-up letter, uh, asking to meet with representatives, talk about Route Seven and Green Mountain Plaza intersection.
Good.
About redesigning that and they're on board. They want to get their signal people and their traffic people and their people, people and other people.
Good.
Put together a meeting and, but they're, they sound like they're into it.
If the signs come, can we put it in the island before they take the island away?
We ordered four signs. We can kind of figure out where we want to put them, but the, yeah, that's probably one of the places.
Okay.
Are we, did we aye that motion?
Oh, yes, because there were three of us and I signed as soon as I heard the aye. This is the, the T-Mobile thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Have you caught up on your sleep yet?
No.
Okay.
No, I have not. I'm running on about two and a half hour nap this morning.
Yep.
Um, so the next thing we talked about was, um, the petition that we received from the residents of Ruth Avenue, which we kind of discussed earlier when Andres was on. Um, it's, you know, that a neighborhood is pretty tattered. It needs some love. Um, but, you know, Andres and his team are trying to put together some kind of stormwater system up there. Doesn't make sense to go up there and pave it and then tear it up in a year. So.
Okay, so we should, we should at least respond to these folks.
I will. I, I wanted to talk to Andres before I responded, just so I could get a timeline because we, I talked to him about it last year. I was, I was actually going to take the money from the grant money that we got back from Town Line Road and spend it up there. And I talked to Andres and he's like, well, you, we're going to do a bunch of work up there and we're not entirely sure what it's going to look like just yet. And we're still working on easements from Velco and blah, 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 and blah. So I kind of, I put it on hold. So I wanted, he said possibly 25. I just wanted, that's why I wanted to ask him tonight. So that was.
Seems like we need to make it 25.
Yeah, yeah, just make it happen, I think. Yeah.
So, um.
Okay. And they were asking for 2024, but the bids are already.
That's already done, right?
Okay.
So I can respond to them tomorrow.
Yes, please. I gotta put the original back in the folder so you'll know who to respond to.
I've got a copy of it.
You should probably push Andres a little bit more on that project up there too and get that ball.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's going to take all summer to engineer and then construction next summer and paving next fall.
Yeah, and I think.
And we'll need to build it into our budget too, so we have the funds for it.
Where, when I talked to him last year, they were kind of hung up trying to get the easements through the legal team at Velco. That was kind of where the stumbling block, where they were, where they are now. It doesn't sound like they made a whole lot of progress from what he said tonight. So.
Okay.
And then, um, we discussed, uh, winter, winter road maintenance practices over the last season and the recent storm, kind of talked about what that was all about. And then I went into building committee, which I'm not really. Okay.
Did you say you, we were skipping over the paving bids?
Yeah, I'll, I'll present that at the next meeting. I have, just haven't had, had time to pour through the whole thing yet.
All right. Um, anything else for our town road commissioner?
I have another widow maker.
Oh.
You didn't very get it.
Where?
East Fitzpatrick Road, right before you go on into the dip before Metal Lake Drive. There's like a hanger about that big hanging out of a tree. And the slip lane by the, that clinic could get winged back a little bit. It's like lane shifted over like six feet.
Okay.
Anything else?
I know, I'll, I'll catch up the highway committee meeting about practices and some stuff like that.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Good. Thanks, Dave, very much.
Turn around, team.
Marcia Choffey, Town Head Lister.
Uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Marcia.
Um, just a couple of things. Our, um, uh, business personal property is trickling in. And I mean, trickling in out of 294 pounds, only, uh, only 30 have come in. And I have identified out of those 30 that 25 are something that can easily be handled by our office. And five of those will go to Gail to process. So, um, the other thing is, um, as per the, um, H480, which is now Act 68, the reappraisal, um, they have granted a contract to IAAO to come up with the, uh, with the program, with a, um, to go to the legislature as to what they feel the legislature and Vermont Tax Department need to, um, to address in the reappraisal process going forward. Um, other than that, um, there's really nothing more. Um, after March elections, of course, there's tons and tons of, um, of webinars that we're doing, uh, some that I've, I've been doing for, uh, like 12 years now. But I still sit there and listen to them because I do pick up, uh, you know, little nuances every now and then. We had a very intensive, um, current use, uh, two-day, uh, webinar a couple of weeks ago, which was excellent, excellent. Uh, there's a lot of changes in, um, current use, which is all now being done in VTPI. Uh, we actually had to go through several problems, um, which are now going to be, uh, addressed by the current use calculator. But in order for us to understand how the current use calculator has come up with values, uh, we were tasked with doing arithmetic and, and so forth. So that was, that was great. It was really, really good. Um, Lister training, uh, two days this week, two days next week. And, um, I think that's, uh, that's just about it. And, um, I don't think there's anything else unless, um, the board has anything.
Um, a question on the second item you mentioned about the, um, consultant that's been hired to advise the legislature. Did I get that right?
I'm advising PVNR, which was part of the, of the bill of the H480, which has become X, uh, um, H, uh, Act 68. Um, IAAO, which is the International Association of Assisting Officers, which is the association that basically, um, we take our, um, uh, our tests through in order to become professional assessors.
So is that still what you're facing or is? So is that still what you're facing, or is that, they're not there yet?
No, we're not there yet. This, this report has to be given to the PVNR and Vermont Tax Department by December 31st of this year. So going forward, we still don't know. It, everything is still up in the air. It's, it's nebulous, you know? What are we going to do? We don't know what we're going to do. We're in the process of putting together our documents to go out for, for bid for contracts, knowing that we're going to have to do it. I mean, there's no getting around it. We haven't had a full reappraisal since 2009.
Yeah.
Statistical in 2013, but, you know, and, and our town's been great. It's been good up until COVID yet. When COVID, everything just went right out the window. We've been at 100. I think the, the smallest amount that we've been in our COA has been 98.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think.
And then suddenly everybody.
Yeah.
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 Um, I have one other question that just escaped me, but, oh yeah, why are so few of the personal property returns in? Or is that the usual? Do you have them?
Yeah, it's, it's usual. The 90% of the returns that we have gotten are banned local, local businesses. The only one, I think the only one that I can think of that came in, that came in in February was Tractor Supply. But everything else, I don't know. Even, even Carrie and Susan, when I go in to check my mail, said, I can't believe it. Usually you've got a stack about six or seven inches high of, you know, returns, but nothing is coming in. So I don't know what's happening, but I think we're going to get slammed. I really do.
Yeah.
So, but we've got two good people that can handle it this year.
As we do. And the announcement in the Rutland Herald and VT Digger, the GE was purchasing, what, $25 million in new equipment and machinery?
Yep.
When is, is that something you expect to see this year or is that going to be a next?
I've talked to Gail Ganick, because she handles the GE, and she also works with Kathy Cousy, who is the representative for GE that Gail works with to evaluate the equipment. It, it, it's going to, I think it's going to go over the next three years.
Okay.
So it's, it's not going to be slam bam, you know, one year. It's going to spread across, but.
Okay, well, thanks. So don't get excited, right? Just yet.
Yeah, it's too bad. We only have a 21 cent per hundred, you know, valuation, but hey, even, even at that, we're, you know, like they keep telling you, Rutland Town, number one in the state for business personal property.
Yeah, I saw the numbers.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Marcia? If not, thank you very much and have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, Chris Clark, town fire chief.
Good evening.
Hi, Chris.
Just a couple of things. Our new fire alarm panel was put in the other day, so that's back and all complete. And on your desk, I think there should be an application to be accepted with your signatures on it tonight for Brogan McCarthy.
Yes, I have it in front of me. He's Rutland City, it looks like.
Yep, his grandfather was a founding member and his father's a 30-plus-year veteran.
Okay. And he's, you're recommending him? He passed all of the everythings that were needed?
He did, yes. So he's good to go.
Okay. Yeah, is, are we at the quota?
We got eight right now, so we have two more to fill.
It's 10 for the city? Okay, okay. Alright, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Brogan McCarthy for the Rutland Town Fire Department. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
Aye, motion carries. Circulate this. Okay, what else have you got?
That's all I had for you tonight.
Okay, any questions of our town fire chief? Alright, paper shuffle here. Thanks, chief.
Thank you. Have a good night.
We shall. Carrie Clark, town clerk treasurer, electioneer extraordinaire.
Oh, boy.
I don't think she wants that title.
I don't think she does either.
I was just going to remind everyone the dog registrations are due. And really, I don't have anything else other than that. I'm kind of. What's that?
Mike said there's a dog receptacle at the park.
If you don't want to register your dog, put him in the receptacle? Is that the, confused? So the school board has set April 30th as the election date on the revote of the school budget. And thank you, Carrie, for coordinating all of that. Board of Civil Authority met and everybody's ready to go. So there we are.
We are, Tina and I are still in discussion about some other things about that election, so to be determined shortly. I'm, I'm hopeful, so.
Okay, good.
But that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Carrie. Mike, fill a hand too. Thanks, you too. Because Mike is not here. So we're on to, wow, how did that happen? Bill Sweet, oh, and as he is approaching, please note that Bill has a title which I'd like to make official tonight. As town administrator, we have gone back and forth, this select board and previous ones, with Bill's title and sometimes tweaks to the title of your predecessor, which at one point was town administrative assistant to the select board. So Joey's urging, we took a look at it and decided you should be called the town administrator. Caution, you're not getting a pay raise, but I will entertain a motion to change Bill's title to town administrator.
Does that need a motion?
Yeah, I think so. I think we better do it. So it's in the minutes and we'll make it, type it up. Yes. Motion's made?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. There you go. You're welcome.
Information czar.
Alright.
He's not getting a raise.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry, I was late. I, I had to phone a friend to get the meeting started, so I think you did a pretty good job standing for me.
You did a good job.
Got it going. That's, that's what it was. So, alright, few, few things. We have some things on the desk, things on the packet, not, nothing too complicated. I, I had to circle back a couple of times, but I was able to get Joe Anthony to agree to April 23rd.
Okay.
For a follow-up, so I've got him on the agenda for April 23rd.
Very good. He is the manager?
Owner.
Owner of the mall.
Yes, Ed Carr is the security person. Michael Sternberg is the local guy and Joe's the head person.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
He's agreed to come April 23rd.
Yep.
As they said, we heard back from V-Trans, they are very willing to have the conversation with us, gave them some details and some information, how we got to where we are, and, and they are like, great, so they're working on that right now. They're going to get back to us when they have the people together they want to talk and then we can decide who we want to be with them, how we want to do that. So, but they're, they're willing to have the conversation. Uh, the, this is as a wrap-up for the committee thing. There wasn't, there's no action to take tonight for the building committee. We, we received and they're posted up there. The, and you have sat there too, you have a couple of them floating around the desks. The final, the latest draft of revisions, I have an extra copy, Matt, sorry, I want to give you, of the plans for downstairs.
Yeah.
It added the shower is in, is in one of theirs, and there really wasn't much else to do, so that is at a point where he asked about estimating. And he asked if we wanted to have a contract be estimating for us and, or he has some services that can do it. And after a little discussing, the committee asked me to go back to him and say, can you get an estimate for us? And he, a little jokingly said he'll try and do a close job this time, so. We, we all were discussing, he may be a little gun shy for, for estimating, but I said, no, I said, we won't, we won't tie our hands for any, any numbers, but, right, not, not his fault. So, but at least to give us an idea, so we can go out to bid and then know at least what we're kind of trying to shoot for, so.
Would his, I mean, once we get an estimate?
Yeah.
Would his next step then be if we said go ahead would be to do bid specs?
That, that would be the, the next step. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where we're at, so.
And then, alright.
Yep. Um, we have, I've not heard back yet on the electrical vehicle grant, which kind of ties up the infrastructure, the infrastructure upgrade, but I've reached out a few times and they've, they've asked me the same question a few times. I've answered it, so I'm hoping I can get an answer. So it's kind of tying up a few things, but we're, we're, we're waiting. We're going to move ahead, we're going to do the upgrade anyway, but it's just how things can kind of get scheduled, so. Um, that was, oh, we also have on your desk for the building resilience infrastructure and communities, we have the grant. That's the, the grant to update our local hazard mitigation plan to work with likely the Regional Planning Commission. We need to put out, we need to put out an official RFP for services.
Okay.
I have a copy on your desks that is largely filled out. Marty and I would be the ones working on this. Are you okay if he and I kind of work on the dates and get this out and then get the proposals back for you? And we can, we can get the proposals back for you guys to review?
Yeah, I will entertain a motion to get the proposals out as modified or as, as, you know, with data and those things by Marty and Bill. Motion's made.
Second.
The local hazard mitigation planning services. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Oh, in, oh, I will, pardon, now, I will note that the amount available for consultant expenses is capped at 6575. Okay, all in favor of the proposal, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Is there anything for, no, there's nothing for us.
No, that's, this is just a, just, that's, that's just the, the working draft at the moment. That covers the desk items.
Rutland Regional Planning Commission, RRPC cost proposal for municipal project management?
That's from Stephanie Burke. That's, we, we covered that. That's her, that's her submittal to us, which we will then take and forward on.
State will have to approve our recommendation.
I don't, I don't foresee any challenges with that.
Right.
So the rest of the things are the packet and any action items. So we do have a sewer allocation increase request. That is C in the packet. Nothing to sign for that, just.
That's just, do we give approval and then you sign it and you deal with it?
You vote on approval and I send the letters and do the things.
So this is for Linda Clark. She was over her usage by, it looks like seven gallons.
Seven gallons, yep.
Um, a day.
Average, yeah.
Yep, and so she sent in her permit amendment and fees, so I would entertain a motion to approve the increase for Linda Clark, Stratton Road.
Approve, second.
Motion's made and seconded?
Should buy a low-flow toilet. Made it.
Have Bill put a sticky on the note that goes through. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
One big one we still haven't gotten. I haven't heard back from them yet, so I got to follow up, so, but. Then there is the address change policy draft. So a model guidance, anything did not really exist. Nobody, I feel like V-Trans had nothing on the topic, so I, I threw some things together based upon our conversation.
Yeah.
And I, so there's, there's some things there. The, the highlighted things were what, what, when it needed to get some more clarification on, if, if you want to do anything or, or what we want, how we want to do it. This, this is, this is, this is home, homemade, so we can, we can make whatever changes we like. The, yeah, do you have any questions or?
Yeah, the first thing I would say that where it says address change policy, I would add E911 somewhere in there, so it ties it all together.
Yeah.
And we should, so other, I noticed second page you have consistent with ordinance.
Yes, so, so that, the 60 days, we have for creating addresses, that's, that's what the ordinance says for establishing new addresses. It's just, that's just a comment for, that's why I chose that number. That's, that's the only reason I chose the number. We, we could, I mean, we can make it 30 days. We can, we could, I wouldn't say more than 60 is probably just necessary, but.
Okay, and this is, and then the.
Shouldn't that, shouldn't there be more to that sentence? Like 60 days, this is what, following your notice?
Well, the, the letter B says, the, the letter will provide correct address and the date when the change will be effective. The effective date will be no more than 60 days. Oh, well, I get, okay, from, okay, yeah, so, yeah. So 60 days from the date of the notice?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
I had put in there the, the exemption, because we talked, I think Kurt, you said, made a comment about if they're off by just a little bit.
Yeah.
So I chose 25 feet because that fell between four and five. So if it's off by four, it's 21.12 feet. So it just was, it seemed like a good, a good number, but if we want, do we, if we want an exemption, I think that's probably, most, most property lines aren't going to be that big, so it would not, not be a big deal.
Okay, I mean, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, makes sense to me, but I think ultimately we should leave the final vote on this for when Joe's here, because it's just kind of.
Well, yeah.
Because I think Bill's got to do another draft.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I will, yeah, I will do a note for sure.
Yeah, the tiny thing I had on here, Bill, was requirements on the first page, the end of this paragraph, I put in a colon. I'm not sure what was there, if it was a single or what, because I wrote it.
Oh, I did, after these requirements?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. This was one of those things, I kept looking at it so much, I had to stop, because I'd drive myself crazy. And then we, we also talked about exceptions for life estate transfers. I, I was trying to kind of word this to, to kind of get, to, to make it so we didn't, it wasn't going to apply to that. But I don't think there was any, we don't, we don't want that to apply to, we don't want it to apply to that, so.
Well, I, I would just leave it.
Okay.
How's that? Not, not say anything about life estate transfers.
That's fine. I mean, and.
Well, what did, what did we say here about? Well, let's see. Somewhere we say when, when this is going to take place.
Oh, at the, the date of the closing, 2D.
2D. Effective date to change the date of the closing, so. It should, so there's some.
I wasn't sure, yeah, I, I was, I got kind of hung up on that. I wasn't sure if that's how you wanted to.
So it's up, I think it's 2C. So the letter will serve as notice the address is incorrect and the changes required during the process of transferring the property to new ownership. And.
And if someone, you know, this is again, one of those things, if someone reaches out and says, ask questions about it, we'll be like, are you selling it to a new, a new owner? Like, you know, we're, we're not trying to, if it's transferred to life estate, I don't think our intent was to make someone to make the. make the change because it, that wasn't.
So on the first page of the guidelines, we're just saying if it's off, you're going to change it according to the following process. Okay. And then the process says, um, well, okay. So under section one, address, addresses which violate policy requirement one and or two. Um, says you're going to send a letter notifying them of the error. The letter will provide the correct address and the date when the change will be effective. And then it says, as we just discussed.
Yeah.
Effective date would be no more than sixty days following notice. So I think we have to add something there, right? That says, oh, I'm sorry. That's if it violates both. So.
If it violates the.
Uneven or the sequence.
Yeah, it has to change. That, that's, that's.
So then we're under two. So then we're saying changes required during the process of transferring the property into new ownership. So my thinking here um, is you could coordinate that with the draft letter here because the letter says effective date of change should be the date of the closing.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think maybe in both places we could put when the property is next transferred for value. So that would, because I think our thinking on this was we're not, we're not trying to, you know, if it's a gift or something in the family, we're not trying to address it then, but when somebody comes in and buys the property.
Well, every deed recites a value. It's not much. One buck or ten bucks. So.
Well.
We can't say fair market, well, we could say fair market value, but that's.
But you go by the PTR. PTR would say.
Um, arms length transaction. You get to weigh in on this. You're a lawyer.
Follow it.
Yeah. Um.
PTR has got a value on it.
That is out my, outside my range of motion.
Yeah.
Well, that's my point. If it's, if there is no consideration, then we, that's when we wouldn't apply. Plus the, the statutory form enhanced life estate deed specifically says there's no consideration.
Oh.
Sure. That's what they said.
If you gotta dig a hole, come talk to me. Otherwise.
I hear you weighing out on that one. Yes. Okay.
Anyways, that would make the intent clear if there's a.
Enhanced life estate deed.
Not triggering this.
We're talking about a requirement to change an address.
Yeah.
Yep.
If it's, if it's, and when not to do it. We don't, if someone's transferring it like to a life estate, we don't want to make them change their address. But if someone is, they're buying, if they're selling a house to someone brand new, yes, we do.
That's a change you want.
Yeah.
If the address needs to be updated.
If they need to update, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, the physical address stays the same. The name on the address changes.
Well, we want the physical number to change.
About requirements for renumbering.
Yeah.
If an address needs to be renumbered.
So you're not going to renumber until there's a change.
Right. But if they're doing a life estate, we don't want to make them change.
Right.
But if they're selling it to somebody else, we do.
So, so you're taking, so you're moving from the old fashioned addresses to the nine eleven addresses.
We're moving from an incorrect nine-one-one address to a correct nine-one-one address.
Yeah. I would, I don't know. Arms length transaction, um, would be one way because a family transaction is not.
No, but why would you want to maintain the incorrect nine eleven?
Well, because i- if it, if it's actually, the theory, the, the thinking was if it's on the correct side of the street, if it's an even number on the even side of the street and it's, um, in sequence, then it, it covers most of what the E nine-one-one policy is intended to do. You can find it. If it, so eventually that number needs to be changed, but it's not urgent. And that's, that's that category. When you transfer the property, you need to fix it then, kind of thing. If it's out of whack, um, with.
Properties.
We're not.
Little houses or something.
No, we don't, we don't have many in the town. So, yeah. So.
This is usually as a result of like a measurement issue.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. So that's, that's why I, I.
Gone to the wrong place.
Yeah. So I, I, so I, I kind of ran into that same thing as I'm trying to write this about, about how to succinctly word it. So it didn't just.
Yeah.
Get out of control.
I would say, I would suggest changes required during uh, the process of, well, actually changes required following closing in the event of a transfer ver- transfer for value.
So if you're doing a transfer for non-value, why not change corrected nine eleven?
Well, the, just the thinking is if, if it's just staying in the same family that's been used to, uh, to that address and there's not another, an urgent need to change it, or more likely what we commonly have now is the use of these enhanced life estate deeds where nothing is substantially changing. We don't want to trigger it just because they filed that deed and all of a sudden same person's living there and now they got to change it.
But why not? Because the nine eleven, nine-one-one address is not for the family. It's for the emergency services.
You missed a lot of backstory.
A lot of complaints.
That's why, that's why the idea.
Okay.
The idea here is to, generally, yes, we want to change it eventually, but if it doesn't trigger one of these things and that makes it really urgent, then we can put it off. That's the idea. Yeah.
What you're saying is the discussion is outweighing the need.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Kind of. And, and the need is frankly, not that great because first responders don't necessarily go by the GPS E nine-one-one address. They kind of, they know where things are. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. So I kind of like Matt's suggestion. Um, I would say transferring the property for value into new ownership. So belts and suspenders. How's that? Okay.
So C, so two C would say during the process of transferring the property for value into new ownership?
Yep.
Yeah, but well, I would say changes required following closing. Right? I mean.
At closing. Well, I think frankly, the.
Clause, they're going to submit the deed for recording and then.
Yeah.
Somebody carry, somebody here is going to go, oh, this triggers the change.
Yeah.
Period.
Okay. All right. So we'll look for a draft.
And, and then I would, you know, corresponding, so edit the letter.
Oh yeah. I wasn't crazy about the letter.
Well, yeah, that was just.
Cause I think you need two.
So this actually is largely a template that the state, the state gives us to use for tra- address changes. So I just changed some of the beginning parts of it. Um, but I, I just want to make sure. So, so under two C, you know, I'm an, I'm an accordion, but I want to make sure I go right. So how, how are we, how are we modifying number two under process?
Play back to recording.
Well, I mean, if you want to make sense. This way, this way I understand.
Okay. First of all, um, so A is the same.
Okay.
B is shall send to the property owner a letter notifying them of the, it isn't really an error. It's the whatever it is incorrect.
Incorrect address.
Indication. All right. The letter will provide the correct address and s- and state a copy of the letter will be recorded in the land records. And then this letter will serve as notice, the address is incorrect and a change is required during the process of transferring the property for value into new ownership.
Okay.
And then is that, did I get that right?
Well, I was suggesting a change during the process to following closing. Um.
Following the closing.
Following closing on a transfer for value.
Okay. Is required following the closing?
Following the closing, transfer the property for value into new ownership.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay.
What, what's it take to change the nine-one-one?
I coordinate with this person on the E nine-one board and we agree on what the number should be and we change it.
But did it go out and measure?
Uh, if we need to, we, we have, we have, or I have gone out to measure in some cases. But there's enough, the interactive mapping data that we have can get us what we need from using computer-based tools. A, a lot of it's done by that way, but if there's something that prohibits that, like, then we can go out, we can go out and measure it.
Yeah. So, so I'm, I'm just trying to think, how much of a burden is it to change?
With this crazy winter we've had and all these storms, they've had thirty-seven callouts to plow and sand.
Lydia, is that you?
No, it's Teresa.
Teresa, you're, you need to mute, please.
Sorry. How do I mute?
The actual identi- identifying a number is not difficult and changing the number is, is not difficult. It's just picking up, picking what it is and, and when to do it. Yeah.
Okay. So there's your worksheet. Thank you very much.
And did you, did you, did you want to make wholesale changes to the letter or? How did you want to?
Okay. I think you need two. You need one that addresses, you got a problem right now and you got to fix it.
Okay. Well, I have that. That's, that's, that does exist.
Standard. Okay. And then this one.
This would be the.
It needs to be more closely aligned with what we actually said in here. So give it another stab as you're drafting.
Sure.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, all right.
Next.
Let's see. That one, uh, we have the write-in candidates and the position dealing appointment.
Okay. All right. Do we want to do any of this tonight? Um, do we want to wait till the other two come back? Do we want to just move right along on the basis of some overwhelming vote totals here, really? Which pleasure.
Matt can vote for himself, right?
Well, it would.
I would abstain.
All right. So, okay, that takes care of that one for now. However, looks like for town grand juror, the high vote getter was Darren Ri- Riley, Riley for twenty, with twenty-one votes. So is there any?
Move that we reappoint her.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to reappoint Darren to town grand juror. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Are there any others you wish to tackle tonight? Do we, do we do anything with the guy sitting here? Yeah. Yeah. Dave.
Yes. I could serve as a, just fill a position as an alternate. I think the, the appointment for the regional planning commission come up in, in June.
It's in June. Yeah.
Why don't we leave me as the alternate and not worry about it in June?
Okay. And I think usually the regional planning commission sends around a reminder. So.
Oh, yes, they do.
Okay. All right.
Glad you still have your position.
Yeah. And.
Feedback about the, uh,
Oh.
Tree warden and the inspector of wood.
Um, so there was actually a very good suggestion and I think it got ignored, but I like your suggestion of having the two candidates for tree warden um, consulted on how best to get rid of a widow maker and whoever does it best gets the job. But the other suggestion was.
Doesn't end up with a widow at the end of it.
The other was, um, to appoint two people who were interested and I don't know any reason why we couldn't.
You have three fence viewers. I mean, why, why not?
I know. So, um, tree warden candidates were Byron Hathaway.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Chris Geo.
Chris.
Geo.
Okay.
Or highway.
Who's Chris Howe.
Our highway person.
Okay.
Helen? No.
How. Chris Howard.
Oh, Howe. Yes. Sorry. Chris Howe.
Chris Howe. All right.
Different Chris.
So is there a motion to appoint two tree wardens?
They'll move.
Um, and they being Brian Hathaway and Chris Howe.
Yep.
Okay. Motion seconded.
Second.
All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 They both want to inspect wood also.
Well, that, moving right along to inspector of wood, do we also appoint them to that? Because.
Byes done the inspector would before.
Has he?
I think he said he had to go out.
Yeah. He inspected a pile of wood once. Yeah.
Because why would we, would we inspect?
Somebody got delivery of firewood that was supposed to be dry.
Sure. Oh, okay.
Supposed to be dry and it ended up being wet.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is that the purpose of the job?
I guess so.
That and a short cord. That's the other thing.
If you get shortened, they go stack it up, measure it.
Does he have to actually stack?
How you get your woods stacked? You just call inspector? I think that file. It gets a little short.
Okay. Is there a motion on inspector of wood?
I move Byron Hathaway.
All right.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded Byron Hathaway for inspector of wood. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries and we won't advise.
I'll go order some wood.
Advise some of this conversation.
By the way, can you stack it up there? Did you ask Lucas about where of coal?
Ah, crap, I didn't.
Yeah.
We didn't vote him in last time?
I, yeah, I didn't ask him.
Okay.
We, we, the, the ones at the end, I, I know they didn't come up, the highlight doesn't come up black and white, but the, the ones, most of the ones at the end there don't.
Yeah.
We were, we were going to follow up.
Okay. Well, if we chip away at them, you know.
Bye, bye next year, well. Okay. No, no problem.
Good.
Uh, let's see. So there, uh, is the, the letter to the days in.
Oh, yeah. Um.
Go to approve it.
Motion's been made to approve. Is the good one in the packet?
Yes, there is.
Motion to approve and sign the letter to the days in thanking them. Is there a second?
Definitely.
Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. I'm gonna. All right.
That's, uh.
This. And.
Everything.
Okay. So under action, I, oh, committee reports, I think we did the building and the highway.
Yeah.
Um, the update on the select board project list, I did want to kind of get back to this. So we're reminding ourselves on maybe longer term things that we're working on. So town and city water and sewer contracts, um, I know one of us might want to pursue that, but perhaps not the others. Um, but at some point, if we need any background or, you know, just a, why are we, why are, why are we where we are? Um, we might have town council come in and give us a little history of the background. So I don't want to ignore you completely, um, on this one. So.
We have had some meetings with a couple of the guys that are in the water department and they are, they are aware of this contract and they are aware that, of its status. And they really have no appetite for any changes at the moment.
Okay. Um, town hall monument, that's being worked on by, um, uh, Dave Sarnock and his veterans group. Town hall building improvements, we just touched on, we've got, um, sketch plans now and we're moving on the next step. Shared use path, which one is that?
Northwood Park.
Northwood Park.
That's the one from.
Should have asked.
Top to the bottom.
Um.
Dave.
Dave, but we'll check in. I have driven around the loop, um, and I know that there's work being done there. Whatever happened to the transfer station toilet? I know it moved from a toilet facility to a, do we put porta potties up there?
Yeah, we were talking about holding tank.
Okay.
And then we're, and we got busy.
Okay. All right. So.
I did, I talked with Dell about it when I was up there at one point. It's feasible. I just haven't.
Okay.
We have to figure out mostly, biggest thing is figure out if we need like a set day permit for that or not.
Well, our active fifty permit might.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um. Um. Pedestrian corridor.
I think that ref- I think that referred to this road and like the sidewalks and, and things like that. I don't, I don't really remember what that.
No, why don't we take it off until we figure out?
That's fine, so I remember to put it back on, but I, I think that'll go away.
All right, Northwood Park Trail System, I think we're working on that.
That's pretty good, yeah, Mi- Mike and I were talking about ways to create some actual maps, like we can put some, get some, get some maps up online, so we, we have, we have, we have some good ideas, so we're, we're working on that.
That would be super if we could.
With walking trails and mountain biking trails not being the same, there's been some interactions on those trails when they first went in, so.
Is the, the Mike, the mountain biking, is that all done?
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess there were some people who made some comments, boy, these new trails are awfully steep, Mike said, well, it's because of bicycles, not for people, not for, not for walking, so we don't, we don't want that to be a problem.
Maybe we could unveil something either at townwide celebration, have it out before and then have it also at.
We're, 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 we're come up with a couple of different options for getting it out there.
Right, Pocket Park is mine, kind of, it's the um, park over here at the falls and I should, when, when Barbara is back, we'll chat a bit. The last thing we were holding on was Green Mountain Power was going to do an archaeological study, which would be required.
And they were, they were kind of looping that was, I, I don't think they're quite done with their recertification yet, that was, that was what they had to do first and they were making this project part of their community.
Yes.
Project, so.
All right, so it's maybe having Barbara and or me checking.
It's inching forward.
Uh, the slip lane, well.
I think that probably just goes away.
Um, yeah, because we didn't up the, when we were up for renewal on the act two fifty permit to allow that, we decided not to renew it.
Yeah.
The idea was Matt down by Green Mountain Plaza to put a, a truck slip lane, another way of trucks getting into feral distributing and back there.
The, the slip lane won't be required if we do the service road.
Correct, and we're moving, we should add the service road up there because it's, we, we contracted with.
BHB.
BHB to finish the study and I don't, haven't heard that.
They are working on it, we, we're getting, we're getting some, we get invoices for it, so they're, they're making, they're, they are moving forward, so, yeah.
All right, let's put that up there instead, service road.
Yeah, should we maybe get some of the landowners down in there back on the radar that, you know, work is boring?
It's um, uh, I forget what his name is, um, there is one basically that's owns the property where we want the road to go. It's, it's getting.
Is it Dave?
Uh, Dave Sharnock?
Dave Nelson.
Dave Nelson, Dave Nelson, yes, that's one, uh, so he owns the property where we want it to go, but, and he is, he was very happy to hear that the conversation is continuing. Um, he nearly put a solar panel array throughout that whole project area, so that, that is on hold now, so. But uh, talking to the businesses, I mean, would be, would be great, there's, there's have been some new people coming in down there.
Yeah.
Uh, Freightliner moved down there.
Kenworth.
Kenworth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Close.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, um.
Yeah, that would, that actually, that service road would.
Would be.
Help Kenworth a lot.
Yeah.
And it would probably make that solar array that they want to put in into retail property.
Well, there was actually someone, there was someone who was looking for some warehouse space and I, and he wanted, he wanted to build a warehouse, something in the back, so I got the two of them together and they're gonna make it work, but I told them, I said, hey, Dave, you want to put in solar panels, build a warehouse and put them on the roof, he's like, that's a good idea. That is.
Yeah.
So, it, there, there is, there is absolutely interest from the people down there.
Good.
In the project, so, and we have, we have some fancy new traffic lights going at the intersection right now, so.
Really?
Yeah, Vtrans is doing that signal work right now.
The crosswalk.
With the crosswalk.
They're doing crosswalks, all, the whole, the whole intersection.
Cross Route seven?
I, I know it's amazing to hear, but there's actually a crosswalk, cross Route seven.
Because the whole idea of putting in.
Sickards, sickards are doing the excavating, Bradley Fossils doing the lighting.
Yes, it's gonna be the same kind of system that the plaza has and it's the same kind of new, it's all new traffic lights and Home Depot is either later this year or next year, they can do that down there too.
Because that was the.
Starting in.
Adele Stanley sidewalk thing.
So all, the whole intersection will be crosswalked.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Okay. Um, succession planning, actually, that just sort of.
We skipped, we skipped.
Oh, dilapidated buildings, right, um. JP as, well, we have an ordinance, a dilapidated buildings ordinance, although I don't think it's quite.
It's not, it's the, it's attractive nuisance, it's the um.
Um, and he was kind of keeping an eye on a couple of places and I think Mike Delahanty reported the last time on the dilapidated building, the intersection of Gleason Road and Route four, so the idea is to kind of keep track of them, keep on top of the landowners to fix them up and prevent them from becoming attractive nuisances.
His efforts have paid off in some cases, we've had, we've made some good progress on them, so.
Yeah. Um. Succession planning is kind of ongoing and we're gradually, I don't know, we, I put it in because, I mean, we've had a changeover in the Lister's office and we've got new folks in there, we've had um, I know Karen, we've budgeted for additional assistance in Carrie's office, so that's part of that. Um.
That was for, so, that was, that was like when we had department heads that left and we didn't have, we didn't have a, a good plan, that, that was where that, the genesis of that was from.
Okay, all right. Um, Route seven north, JP sidewalk, we actually just took action on that tonight.
Yeah.
Rooftop solar arrays, um, this was mentioned at a site visit up at Northwood when Green Mountain Power, we were looking at the, the old landfill site and that thing fell through, but she, the GMP person said, why don't you look at town buildings and see if there are any that can support rooftop solar arrays, you folks might do very well with that. And we do have an energy committee, um, so maybe we should call that committee together and take a look again at that. And then the new public safety building, we just signed another approval for another payment on it, so we're getting there. Okay, all right, so thank you for indulging me, I think it's wise to go through that once in a while. Under action needed, we spoke with Andres, um, we took a look at some of the writing candidates, we've got one other position when the other select board members are back. We did the sewer allocation increase, we did the address change draft revisions, um, and we'll look for a new draft. We did the VLCT grant award, nice work by the way.
Thank you.
We did the T-Mobile contract for the highway department. We um, reviewed the list of um, needing appointments and will continue to do that. We did Bill Sweet's title, we don't need any executive session that I know, but I'm open to suggestions if anyone.
Imagine that.
Oh, okay.
Imagine that.
And any other new items? Wow.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Questions made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned.